Supervisors, Tuesday, July 19th. Has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
At this time, supervisors, if you would please log in for roll call.
I got a little trigger happy there, I'm sorry. Do you want to start over?
Why, we're not good?
Well, I got a little trigger happy with the roll call before everybody was done.
Okay, apparently, we're doing roll call again, according to Michelle.
All right, hold on one second.
Give us...
Does that mean I have two needs?
Yeah. Everybody else can get three.
You barely earned the one you get. That's why I asked for more.
Now, you can.
All right, now, we can roll call?
Yep.
All right, ready, set, go. Okay, so Supervisor Lore and Clemmons are excused. Everybody else is present, so we have 29 supervisors present making a quorum. That brings us up to item number three, invocation and pledge of allegiance. Vice Chair Dietrich, who do we have tonight?
Supervisor Shell, please.
I call for blessings on this meeting. Let us have fun, yet productive discussions that will broaden our perspective. Let us take various ideas presented and think of ways to flesh them out. If we do disagree, let it be on content, not personality conflicts or power plays. Let us resolve any disputes gracefully, be creative problem solvers, and have great team spirit. Let us find principles that we all can agree on and put these into action.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Supervisor Shell, nice job. Item number four, ladies and gentlemen, you have before you the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Supervisor Spencer, second by Supervisor Scanlon. Is there any discussion to the agenda? Seeing nobody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brings us up to item number five, adopt the minutes of the previous meeting. You have the minutes before you. Motion by Supervisor Shell, second by Supervisor Klitsky to approve. Is there any discussion on the minutes as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was an aye. Forgot about the time, delay Supervisor hazard. The minutes have been adopted. Item number six, general consent agenda items this evening from Law Enforcement Judiciary Committee. You have before you Resolution 73-2022. Tanner Christine Greaves, who over 20 years of service is found on page three in your packets. Motion by Supervisor Scanlon, second by Supervisor Klitsky to approve. Supervisor Scanlon, do you care to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Klitsky to your second.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Seeing nobody else in the queue at the time, does anybody else care to speak? All right, you now have the resolution before you. It's a consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's an aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And Christine is not here tonight, but if she's online, or if the sheriff wouldn't mind, please share with...
Child support.
Pardon?
Child support.
Oh, child support, sorry, I knew, I guess I knew that, I was sleeping at the wheel. Whoever, somebody, thank her for her service, 20 years is a long time. Item number seven, we do not have any scheduled appearances. That brings us to public comment. Folks, if you have not already signed up for public comment and you are interested in speaking, you do have an opportunity to fill out a form and bring it forward. Otherwise, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and proceed. First on deck, Dick Meyer, E 9919 First Street, Prairie to Sack, representing the Honey Creek ATV Club. You have the podium. And to keep us rolling, Timothy Es... Okay, Erps, you're on deck.
Dick Meyer, I'm the Trail Manager for the Honey Creek ATV Club. We support Town of Prairie to Sack, Troy, Sumter, Honey Creek, and Town of Franklin, Village of Sauk City. And I'm here to support that opening up all county roads currently. One of the key ones is PF for our area, especially Town of Prairie to Sack, because we can't cross Highway 12 into the village. That's where there's two gas stations and places to eat, and those are the places we frequent mostly. The other one, Highway B, has sections open, sections not, prevents us from getting into plane. From the east side, we have to drive nearly 20 miles around east and, or west and north to get in from the west side. And the other one that affects us is Highway C in Sumter. That one would just, there's about two miles or so that's not open there. And that would allow those residents that live in that area to be able to access the routes. So, we're here asking for your support to vote for all county roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy, I'm gonna... SB, thank you very much, couldn't read your handwriting, 607 Maple Street, Sauk City. You have the floor. Neil Kaflish, you are on deck.
Thank you very much, Chairman and County Supervisors. First of all, I do want to appreciate what you're doing here tonight and just your participation in this democratic process. I very much appreciate it, and your service is appreciated. I am speaking in support of the ATV, UTV routes on all county highways. I speak for myself. My wife and I are members of many clubs around the county, but we are speaking on our own behalf. UTV riders are, for the most part, law-abiding and respectful lot. Approving all county highways will prevent riders from inadvertently finding themselves in route pickles. It will reduce that uncertainty. It will also increase accessibility, not only to roads, but to our beautiful county, our towns, and our businesses, and many of the small towns and the small businesses where access to them is lifeblood. And UTVs can increase that. Let's keep Sauk County riders and their revenue in this county. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Neil Kaflish, the infamous Neil Kaflish. S 3607 Golden Road?
Gildan.
Gildan. Town of Greenfield, representing himself. Next up is Kathy Whalen. You have the floor, Neil.
Okay.
And welcome.
Pardon?
And welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I'm in support of this, UTV roads. It's pretty hard to get to A to C if you can't go down a county road, because it's, you get there and you're closed. So, we've got to go back and go all the way around again. And they're safer than a bicycle, snowmobile, moped, so on, so forth. And the people that ride these things are about my age, I think. No, I'm just kidding. So, I'm supportive of it, and I hope you people will support it also. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Whalen, E 9097 Hogsback Road, representing Bear Boo Bluff ATV Club. Next up is Dan Fleming.
I'm Kathy Whalen, lifelong Sauk County resident, and I would like to speak to you tonight about strongly recommending that you approve all county highways for ATV and UTV use. This will accomplish four things. It will reduce or eliminate the process that's currently in place where the sponsors have to apply only once a year. The review is needed by multiple county individuals and committees. We have a full board vote on each request. That's very cumbersome and time-consuming. Number two, it will eliminate the need and the cost for extra signage that's required for UTV use. Three, it will clarify and reduce confusion for law enforcement regarding which roads are open and which are not. This would include Sauk County Patrol and the DNR Wardens. Number four, it would clarify and reduce confusion for ATV users in simplifying which roads are open and which are not. So, but thank you for listening, and I hope that you will vote to approve opening all county highways. Thank you.
Thank you. And am I the only one to notice she said cumbersome and then looked at me?
No, no, we got it.
Dan Fleming, E 8356 County Road H, you are up. And next on deck is David Bicknell.
Dan Fleming, from Sauk Road Runners ATV Club. Our club has been involved in opening many township roads, village roads, in a couple of the cities. And it really gives people access to get to businesses. The thing that limits us now is the lack of some of the county roads. If the county roads were open, there's people that live on the county road that can't even get out of their driveway because of that section of road is not open. It would give them access to get out on some of the other roads and town roads. It'll also give more access to businesses as well. I, I hope that we can get support for this. It'll save a lot of confusion for law enforcement as to which roads are open, which roads aren't open, as well as the ATV clubs and riders as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And at this time, the last speaker I have is Dave Bicknell, S 4992 Rock Hill Road. If there's somebody that hasn't signed up for public comment that wants to speak, this is your last opportunity. Again, forms are over there. And Dave, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I'm here in support of the UTV trails, opening it up. And first of all, I'd like to just thank the board for what we have right now, because it's been great. He gave my address, I'm three miles west of town. Rock Hill is one of the scenic roadways between Hatchery Road and Hudal. So, I'm seeing substantial traffic of hot rod clubs, bicyclists, motorcycle clubs, and then kind of with the trail configuration, kind of the main artery for UTVs coming across. Initially, we were certainly skeptical, I didn't have a UTV. Everything has been quiet, maintained, we've had no issues. The only thing quieter than a UTV's gone by is the bicycle guys. So, I have, I'm hoping that we can open up more, just to get around better, but I have no issues, and everything's been great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else, has brought any forms forward? We're going to close public comment at this time. That brings us up to item number nine, communications. We have one communication. Folks, that is, was put in your packets late, so it's in Granicus if it wasn't with your other materials. And this is from the United States Department of State, recognizing the Sauk County Clerk's Office as one of the top, is a small group of passport application acceptance facilities without Wisconsin to receive a perfect score on the acceptance facility oversight review report. So, congratulations to...
Thank you.
Congratulations to Clerk Everett and Michelle and the entire staff. They do an excellent job down there. And the good news is, if you want to go travel international and don't have a passport, you can get one right here in Bear Boo. And it'll be done right. Correct?
Correct.
All right. Item number 10, brings us up to appointments. You have before you appointments, starting off with the Sauk County Library Board. Glenn Slots, new appointment, citizen member, three-year term expiring 7/15/2025. Sauk County Healthcare Center Board of Trustees, Cindy Bodendine, a new appointment, citizen member, three-year term expiring 7/15/2025. And a staff appointment for Finance Director Lynn Horkin. We have a motion to approve the appointments by Supervisor Krieger, motion by, or seconded by Supervisor Rego. Before I release the floor, I can see the administrators just chopping at the bit. So, with the board's permission, Brent, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one recommendation that I am thrilled to make, and yet I am heartbroken to make, because our Finance Director, Carrie Baggan, will be retiring on September 2nd. She's been here for over 28 years. But one of the things that I have been preaching since I got here to my department heads is a continuity of operations plan and a succession plan. Lynn and the Accounting Department exemplify that. She has been the Accounting Manager since 2008. The Accounting Manager is essentially the Deputy Director, if you look at it on an org chart. And Lynn has been an integral part in the budget process, the request for new positions, reclasses. She understands the whole thing. She's very, very understanding of the, all the workings of the Accounting Department. And I truly believe that this gives us the best opportunity to continue on with no hiccups or anything like that. So, it is my pleasure to recommend Lynn Horkin as the new Finance Director.
Thank you, Administrator Miller. Supervisor Krieger, did you care to speak to your motion?
Yes, hopefully briefly, but continuing on with Brent's line of thought was that he did, as Chair of the Finance Committee, he did bring this appointment to our committee for discussion and input. I can tell you that it, that we, we all agreed with the, not only with the continuity of operations in that department, which is excellent, and the number of consecutive years that that department has received awards for, for its budget work is, I think, reaching now double digits. But also to speak, you know, he also spoke about an opportunity for advancement for qualified people in this organization. And I think, having worked with Lynn for a number of years, you know, she came to, came down from Human Services to the Accounting Department while I was Board Chair. There was never a doubt in my mind about her ability. But Brent assured us that when he spoke to her about it, the important thing to me also was that she asked for a week to, not only to, you know, have, to think about herself and have some introspection, but also to, you know, speak about, speak with it, and all that came with it with her spouse. And so, after he afforded her that time, she came back with a positive answer that, you know, she did want to take the responsibility. I, I think it not only assured me, but all of my fellow members in the Finance Committee that this was certainly the right step to take. So, we, we are fully in support of this. Also, I don't know Mr. Slots, but I do know Cindy Bodendine. And I really couldn't think of now, right now, of a better replace, or better addition to the Board of Trustees for the Healthcare Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Rego, do you care to speak to your second?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have a motion before us. I don't see any other supervisors in the queue. Is there anybody else that cares to speak to the appointments before us? Seeing none, you have the three appointments on the floor. You may vote on them now through roll call. You may cast your votes now. Okay, we have 29 supervisors in favor of the appointments, with nobody in opposition. Two supervisors absent and excused. Congratulations, everybody. Congratulations Lynn, who's in the back of the room. Wave at everybody. Okay, that brings us up to item number 11. Do we have any bills?
No.
Item 12, any claims?
No.
Item 13, any elections?
No.
14, any proclamations?
No.
Brings us to item 15, reports. Clerk Everett.
I have nothing.
She has none. Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Administrator Miller, you got a demotion.
Didn't even hear you. I want to congratulate the Clerk's Office for doing such an exemplary job on the passports. Way to go. I also want to thank Christine Greaves for her over 20 years of service to Sauk County, the constituents here, in child support. That is another achievement that is tremendous. So, we will be bringing a resolution forward on Carrie Baggan also, not till she's retired. She doesn't get it before, so. One thing, and I think all of you should have gotten an email today about the legislative breakfast that we are planning. I'm thrilled with this. It will be scheduled, or it is scheduled for August 12th at 8:00 a.m. at Monks in the Wilderness in the lower level. You all should have received an email. If you did not, please let me know, and please RSVP right now. We've had 20% RSVP on this, and this will be just department heads, county board supervisors, and the legislature. Right now, with both federal and state legislators, all have confirmed that they will be here, or a staff member will, with the exception of Senator Baldwin, which is remarkable that they will all be here at that breakfast. And this, this forum is to engage them, to bring to light things that are affecting us from both the national level and the state level, and, and bring our concerns to them. So, have your stuff thought out so that you can explain it. I'm not going to be the only one talking, at least I hope not. But the cost is $16.65, and that includes tax and tips. On a note that I'm sorry to say, but due to the limited seating, we're unable to accommodate anyone other than the board members and department heads, and not spouses. On a different note, I wanted to talk about the ExploreSaukCounty.com. We, we just recently got our first quarter results of being live, and this is, to date, we've received 784,784 views on this website. That's a lot in a quarter. Some of the things that they want to see is where to stay, buy about 5,000 users on a, on a weekly basis, outdoor activities. Then, the one remarkable thing is Chicago is the primary area where people are looking at this, and Milwaukee is second. So, the highest ranking areas of interest are food and dining. And this one threw me for a loop, and pet lovers are highest ranking in special interest groups. So, again, the takeaway is our campaigns are outperforming the national tourism benchmarks. So, kudos to you for approving that and moving forward with that. The last thing I want to talk about is called securitization. And I'm sure all of you have heard that with the opioid settlement, there is a settlement right now with the distributors. We have talked at length with both the attorneys, Atolus Law Firm, the counties, and the national level about this project, or this funding that will be coming down. This is the first of three or four settlements that will be happening. What the attorneys and basically the counties association are recommending is called a securitization, or taking the money in a lump sum. There's two options. We talked about it with, with, at length with the Finance Committee, and most of them have sat in on some of these, excuse me, presentations. We can take it, the payments over 18 years, and these funds can only be used towards opioid addiction or the treatment, whatever that would be. We can't use them for the highway. We can't use them for the sheriff. It has to be tied in with that. The one recommendation with the Finance Committee that we recommended is that we take the securitization. We will get somewhere between 71% to 85% of that settlement of $1,613,749 that will be coming to Sauk County for the simple fact that we do not know how many of those businesses will be in business in 18 years. So, we will, we are recommending, and we will be moving forward to tell them that we will be taking securitization.
For clarification, we'll be explaining that we're interested in take securitization.
Yes.
Securitization, because it ultimately comes back to us for a final decision.
Yes.
Is that all?
That is all, sir.
Okay, I'm afraid to do this. Dr. Pepper, your light is on, is that on purpose?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing that. Brent, on August 12th, that legislative meeting, if we have more than 15 members in this...
It will be posted as a...
It will be posted, we won't have to worry about the quorum laws or anything like, but we don't get paid to go to it.
That's not my decision.
That, that is correct. This is not a meeting of the board, so you are on your own and you are not...
Right, but we will have a quorum, and it will be called a meeting, but it'll be an unpaid meeting.
Not a meeting.
The way it works is we put a notice out stating that this event is occurring, and there may be a majority of the board there, but they're not there to conduct business.
And there will be no actions or decisions taken.
I just wanted that for clarification. Thank you.
Yep. And on that point, I guess that moves into my point. Because it is not a board meeting, you are, do not expect per diem or mileage, and you're paying for breakfast. It's a great deal. I have really not a whole lot to add, other than I do want to thank Supervisor Pepper and Smooth and the rest of the Highway Committee, and Bob and Terry Spencer, and I probably forgot somebody on the committee, but... Pardon? Kevin Shell? Yeah, that was on purpose. Flint, for working through the last month and a half on this ATV ordinance. And I, I'll just say that I, we do anticipate there will be an amendment from the floor that'll make this battleable for us moving forward, and I'll let, let them explain it when we get to that point. But thank you all for your patience on that, because I know it, it didn't go, it went over like a lead balloon. Supervisor Polivka?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to make the board aware that the Tri-County Airport received notice here two weeks ago that the FAA has approved the funding for our drainage project down there.
Thank you, Mr. Polivka, I forgot, oh, bow then.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis. That was on our list, and we didn't spit it out. Yeah, so that's, the thing about that, folks, we started with what was to be a $10 million project that we weren't sure if we were going to get off the ground in two years, breaking ground, getting it done, and... Yeah, right? Yeah, I did, thank you very much. And not only is it, are we getting it done, but it's mostly paid by federal dollars through ARPA and the grants. So, good work to Dennis and the Airport Commission and Richland County. Okay, item number 16, we do not have any unfinished business. That brings us up to number 17, by the looks of the room, the highlight of the evening. Under New Business Highway Committee, item I, Ordinance 9-2022, an ordinance to amend Sauk County Code, Chapter 15, to add all terrain ATV and UTV crossing in routes on county highways. It's found on pages four through 11 in your packet. Before we get started, Supervisor Spencer, we did discuss that you were going to abstain this evening. I did forget to explain that as part of the abstention, we do have to request that you leave the room at this time. I'll get to talk about Bob when he leaves.
Remember, let me know when I go back in.
Yeah, we talked about it, I got to him as he was sitting there, I'm like, oh, we never, never followed up. Anyhow, so we have on the floor a motion by Supervisor Terry Spencer, second by Supervisor Smooth Deter. Supervisor Spencer, do you care to speak to your motion? Trying to find you. I got Spencer over there, and a Spencer over there.
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman. For most of those board members that aren't familiar with this ordinance, we've been dealing with this ordinance probably three to five years before I was even on the Highway Committee, and this is in my second term. If you notice that the ordinance is in the packet, it shows several strike-throughs. This is how it's been worked on. This ordinance has cost, without trying to get too dramatic on it, we sent it out first to take and have it done by an outside attorney's firm, and they brought it back to us after a couple of years. And Brian has been able to work with it with his office. One of the biggest things that I am in supportive, and I am not a member of an ATV club, even though my last name is Spencer, and one of the reasons is, is because of, this ordinance is going to take and clarify a lot of things going in the county. One of the worst things that we could do to our law enforcement agencies is to leave doubt on where they're going to do the enforcement. And this is a big problem. For those who don't know, I did several years, 40-plus years in law enforcement, most of it with the county highway here. When it comes to snowmobiles and bicycles and any, any other place that goes on the highways, it's hard to figure out where the enforcement goes if you, if you start making special rules for special areas, special townships. And so, it becomes a real problem. I personally support this because my son finally gave me my ATV back after five years. And I might be able to ride in Town of Greenfield again after I fix it, what he broke. So, but the long story is, is that this has been a long time coming. There's been a lot of modifications in this ordinance over the last three to five years. I do hope everybody supports this. I do know there's our place, there are places, excuse me, that are not exactly fond of it, but with Chairman McCumber's assistance, we went back, we notified these places. Very few, if any, objected to the ideas of having the roads open in their communities. So, um, with that, I, um, hope you support and endorse this, uh, new ordinance for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Spencer. And when were you out on parole? No, sorry. You work for the Sheriff's Department, folks. All right, that brings us to the seconders. Supervisor Smooth, do you care to speak to your second?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm gonna suggest a friendly amendment here in a second to put a cherry on this. But I want to pause for a second and just commend all the clubs and the work you individually have done. In my opinion, a little unfairly to you, the work you've had to do to do something which I feel like every other thing on wheels gets to do or on skis. Um, and you've been patient, you've, you've, uh, been professional. You've spent a lot of your own personal money and I just commend your citizenship and how long this has taken to be, uh, I feel accurate now. So, good job. Really impressive. Um, I think the, the last little thing here that, uh, I think would make municipalities happy is if we go to line ninety-nine. Currently, it says the committee may temporarily modify or suspend any ATV, UTV route. And then it goes to line one hundred, designation upon recommendation of the Highway Commissioner.
Sorry, Smooth.
Huh?
Sorry, I was clearing, setting it up. I had multi-speaker mode on, so everybody was lit up. I turned it off, so.
Um, it says comma or, and I like to scratch the or. Uh, comma sheriffs or Saw County Sheriff, and I'd like to add comma and/or municipalities. What this will do is give municipalities a direct line to the committee and then ultimately the board to, uh, petition to have a certain section closed. If they can prove, deem, or otherwise argue that the section is causing a, a problem currently, uh, they could bring it to a committee. But this pretty much specifies that they have the same recognition of, of, uh, respect and, and power that they may suspend these routes, um, if we, if we see a problem. So it, it, I don't know if we can do that as a friendly or if we have to do it as an add-on.
Yeah, unfortunately, the friendly motions don't exist, but. So we have a motion on the floor to, second by Dr. Pepper, to amend the ordinance at line one hundred after Saw County Sheriff to include and/or municipalities. Is that the correct spot?
It will also cross off the word or before Saw County.
Cross off the word or. Uh, so we have a motion in a second. At this time, we will, uh, clear the queue and we get the debate on the motion to the amendment. And I will say, folks, this came up, uh, last month and we had some extensive debate. Um, and I just want to give you a little history, not to talk about this, but anytime in a committee, we want to make some sort of change. If, if we do it in committee, there are times we postpone things multiple weeks out because we have to repost them, whatever. However, this body has the ability to make these amendments from the floor. So that's why, for the record, the committee didn't do it because they met last week. And so this was a result of their work and discussion. Um, so you have the motion in a second and on that Supervisor Polivka, you, uh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the thought that's being put into this amendment. However, uh, I guess I object to it from the standpoint that the county has a say over the county roads. We do not go in and tell the towns or villages what they can do on their streets. Uh, they can, if there's a problem, they can bring it up with the Highway Commissioner or the Sheriff. And if it's a legitimate problem, I have no doubt that either one of them will act. On the negative side, down where I live, ATVs were kept off the road for several years because one individual didn't like ATVs. And it was not that the ATVs were doing anything wrong for some reason, uh, and it happened to be the town chairman. Didn't particularly care for ATVs, so, you know, there again, I'm all in favor. The, the towns and cities have their right to say anything they want on their streets. And I guess I'd rather have it come back to the sheriff or the Highway Commissioner, uh, to make that decision if there's a problem.
And that's what the motion amendment does. It, it says that they can go to the Highway Commission. They don't have to accept it. It says they can ask.
Well, I, I thought the motions stated, maybe I misunderstood, that a municipality could.
Could request to have a portion closed. They can't close it and we don't have to vote for it.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Okay, thank you, Smooth.
I stand corrected.
No worries. All right, Supervisor Pepper, you are next in the queue.
Just wanted to, uh, say that the Chairman McCumber got it right and it was a timing issue with the amendment. We wanted to do it last week, but there wasn't enough time for it to be legal and we didn't want to kick it down the road another month, so.
No, there's plenty of time for it to be legal.
Then why couldn't we done it?
Wasn't enough time to repost and publish.
Oh, then that wouldn't have been legal.
Sort of.
So I'm right?
It's, yeah.
Again.
We're doing everything legal.
Still, still right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pepper, for once again, words of wisdom. Is there anybody else in the, that cares to speak to the amendment? This is only on the amendment. Seeing nobody in the queue, you have a motion before you to amend at line one hundred, uh, scratching the word or. Uh, the second was by Pepper. Yeah, Smooth made the original, second was, uh, Pepper. So we're striking the word or before Saw County Sheriff and adding and/or municipalities at line one hundred. Everybody understand the amendment? Okay, as soon as Michelle's done typing. Do bear with us, we had, uh, some new software, so this is new territory. It's only the second month we've been working with it. Yeah, County Board Meeting. What's really funny is we did test this for several hours one afternoon, but it's a lot to do. Cool, you got it, Michelle? Oh, oh, got it. I think they get three minutes, right? Where's the background music when we meet up? Supervisor Hazard, could you play our, your gong for us while we wait?
Yes.
Oh, didn't hear it.
Didn't hear it.
All right.
All right.
Getting closer. Got it. Okay, you have the motion before you. If you all remember what it is, you may now vote at this time. And Supervisor Spencer abstains. We have twenty-nine, uh, twenty-eight supervisors in favor of the amendment with one supervisor abstaining and nobody in opposition. The amendment is now added to the original motion, which is before you. You have amended ordinance nine, twenty twenty-two. We may now, uh, apparently I'm doing something I ain't supposed to be doing.
Yeah, don't touch.
I pushed a button and it went. Okay, so, uh, can I go ahead and start debate again?
Yeah, well, no.
No, okay. Okay, well, we're, we need debate at this point, so we are now debating the, um, the ordinance as amended. Supervisor Pepper, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the clubs should really be commended for all the work that they've done in the last few years. There's next to no county funds been spent on signage. The clubs have put up the signs, paid for a lot of signs. I'm sure there's some work that the Highway Department's had to do, but it's been minor. And, uh, I just appreciate everybody's support. We worked long and hard on it. I, uh, had multiple conversations with Chair McCumber in the last six weeks, trying to get this thing to move forward. We got things ironed out. I never had a doubt that the, the political process would work its way through and diplomacy and we worked it out. We got it right. Please vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Lombard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, to start with, I fully support this. I've watched this for years and I've watched the clubs work toward this for years. But I do want to know how Rob Nelson's questions are, are answered as far as the city is concerned.
So I did speak to Mayor Nelson today and, uh, we, we addressed that issue with the amendment moments ago, meaning that if there's a section of highway they feel should be closed, they're, they should present that to the Highway Commission. And so I explained to him that the ideal thing would be to, for his, his board council to pass a resolution, send it on the Highway Committee, they'll review it and we'll go from there. See how the process works. Thank you. Uh, Supervisor Teal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions I just, uh, for clarification. On line number two eighty-eight, it says no person under the age of sixteen may operate an ATV and that's, and that was struck. And I'd like to know the reason why that was struck?
That's actually covered earlier in the ordinance where it says all, all, uh, ATV, UTV rules under statu- statute apply, which sets the age limit.
Okay. Does that also apply, um, to line number two ninety-one? Um, shall have in his or her immediate possession of allied motor vehicle operator's license?
Yes, they're required to have either a motor vehicles license or if they're under the age of eighteen, they have to have a certificate verifying they can drive an ATV, UTV on the highway.
Okay.
Because they have to pass a class.
Okay. And lastly, um, I see that the, uh, speed limit has been increased to forty-five from thirty-five? What was the reasoning on that?
I believe also kind of more of a, in line with, uh, um, rules allowed by state statutes, so they're closer to highway travel speed. You don't want to come over a blind curve or a blind hill at fifty-five or, well, okay, the way, um, I drive, it's sixty-five miles, sixty-four chip, uh, miles per hour. And then, you know, you, there's a vehicle going thirty-five miles per hour that maybe you didn't see. So that's, I don't want to speak for a committee, but that's my understanding. Pat, did you want to speak on it? I think we're doing okay. So, if we get stuck, we'll call. Supervisor Darner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just some clarification course, questions to, um, lines twenty-one through twenty-seven in the background paragraph. I'm assuming that all applies to state highway proposed routes?
So you're talking about lines twenty-one through twenty-seven on page four?
Cur, no, page one.
I'm.
I'm sorry.
It's page four in my packet. I'm sorry, page one of the ordinance.
Of the background, of the ordinance, lines.
That language hasn't changed. It was originally there because that's kind of statutory reference stuff.
Does the, are federal highways, can federal highways be ATV routes?
Not under state law or federal law.
So just state highways or below, okay.
Right.
The only other thing I, other thing I would add is that, and just more maybe a clarification thing than anything, that the end of line twenty-three where it says the state routes, might that be better if it says the state highways? Just to, to make sure, differentiate that between what might at some point be a state ATV route that's not highway.
Yeah, no, that's actually right. That's, uh, in state statute. There are small sections of state highways that can be open if they meet criteria, but the County Board would have to.
I, I, no, that's not my point. My point is, it's just a wording issue. Should it say the state highways instead of the state routes?
Thank you. Yeah, it's routes on highways.
I understand that. Thank you.
No. Supervisor Hazard?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, just looking for some clarification from what I read in that, uh, policy. And that's that, uh, a route, this doesn't happen overnight. In other words, if someone wants to drive on County Trunk W, a club or an organization has to sponsor it first and signage has to go up and it has to be approved by a committee. Is that correct?
That was the previous process. Uh, this is eliminating that.
So then, yeah, as soon as, because I saw that, as soon as it gets passed after tonight, it goes into effect. Which means if, um, the city of Baraboo has, uh, a bone to pick with ATVs going all the way down to Farm and Fleet and beyond because it's part of County Trunk A, uh, they can't do much about it other than appeal to the committee and wait for it to go through the process. Is that true?
Somebody on the committee, Spencer, you're shaking your head. Would you care to help with that?
Brian, you mean, you mean County W, right?
Oh, County Trunk W, sorry, by Walmart.
Yeah, and I, and I don't believe W goes all the way. As soon as it hits the city limits, it turns over to, to, uh, that South Parkway there and that ends right at the bypass, I believe.
No, I, I checked with Tom Pinyan in the, in the city and it was all the way to, uh, Moore Street and Farm and Fleet.
Okay. I, I guess I can't answer your question. Pat?
All right, Pat, you're up, just like, uh, you knew it was coming, didn't you, Kevin? Yeah.
So my understanding is if this is passed, uh, the routes would not become active until they're properly signed. So we would have to, uh, sign the open routes, which isn't going to happen overnight, and then remove the existing end, end trails and end routes on the system. So tomorrow, nothing is going to change because the signage, as is now, is going to stay. It will probably be a month at least before we get additional signage up. So there is time for municipalities to react to this.
Yeah, and that's.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure. And that goes back to what I was telling Andrea before. I did talk to Mayor Nelson today and, and advised him on how he could address those concerns and bring them back. So, okay, Supervisor Chrysler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a couple of quick things. First of all, again, thank you to, to all the people who spoke tonight. In talking with, um, Village of Prairie de Sac, I know there was some concern with the village board. But I think we've addressed that and I think we've addressed it for a lot of the village boards out there and I appreciate that. Um, second thing I'm curious about is because this is going to impact Sheriff Meister, is there, is it an appropriate time to ask him if he has any concerns with this?
Oh, absolutely. Come on up, Sheriff Meister. Since, uh, to answer your question bluntly, no, there are, since we've had ATV or roads open to AV, ATVs, our issues with ATVs has been very minimal. A couple of things, and I'm sure you all know, that it's not the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds that are owning these thirty thousand dollar ATVs that you see out on the road. Like Neil said earlier, they're, they're older. And so they're, we don't, we really don't have the problems with them. Do we have any problems? Yes. But it's typically very isolated. You know, somebody coming up for the weekend and brings their ATV and doesn't know the rules or is just there to tear around. So issues from the sheriff's department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is land and resources and envi, no, sorry. I saw Lisa back there, she didn't get it turned yet. Supervisor Burchill?
Yes, thank you Mr. Chair. I want to revisit quickly the signage. In a couple of places, one sixty-four to one sixty-eight and two fourteen to two fifteen, it talks about sponsors supporting and maintaining the financial maintenance support, procurement, installation and maintenance of the signs. Who's going to take care of the signs?
Historically, it has been the ATV, UTV clubs have been doing that for us and anybody from the club want to speak for the guy we kicked out of the room? But I believe that's, Pat?
So DOT policy is on the state requested routes, the club would sign, pay for those signage. We need to discuss how we're going to approach if this passes on the county level with the highway committee, being that we're going to change how we sign it if it passes. We're going to sign at our territorial boundaries and eliminate a lot of the route marking signs on the county highway system. So I'm guessing some sort of combination of highway department budget as well as UTV, ATV clubs to clean up what we currently have out on the system.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, this could have a budgetary impact?
It could, yes. It ultimately is going to be minimal because most of it is going to be removal of signs.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize Supervisor Pepper, is there anybody who hasn't spoken the first round that cares to speak in the first round? Seeing none, Dr. Pepper, you have the floor.
I'll make it quick. I forgot to mention before that these UTVs and ATVs that use these routes pay for registration, pay for licenses, have stamps put on there. They get stickers every two years, every three years or whatever, and I have an ag tag that I paid for for mine also, so I'm multiple registered with mine, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Deter.
Thank you. In addition, I would bet that most of these units are running taxed fuel, which they could run on our off-road fuel. There's just not that many options to run, to purchase off-road fuel, so these vehicles are paying tax for the roads. They're sharing the roads with bicycles, horse-drawn carriages, a guy with a lawnmower with an orange triangle behind it, farm equipment, walkers. You know, this is so overdue, it's not even funny, so, thank you.
Okay, I do not see any other supervisors in the queue. This is your last chance to speak to ordinance nine twenty-two as amended. Seeing none, you have the ordinance in front of you. Ordinance nine twenty-two is amended to amend chapter fifteen ATV and UTV crossings and routes. You may vote now. Maybe. Yes. You may vote now. And Supervisor Spencer has abstained, as has Supervisor Teal. It's twenty-seven in favor with nobody in opposition and two abstentions, two supervisors absent an excuse. The ordinance is adopted. And please note Supervisor Spencer has rejoined the family party. We're on to item B, Land Resources and Environment Committee. Resolution seventy-four twenty-two authorizing amendments to Sauk County Farm and Healthcare Center cropland and pasture lease agreements. Found on pages twelve through fifteen in your packet. We have a motion by Supervisor Krieger, second by Supervisor Polivka. Supervisor Krieger, do you care to speak to your motion?
I do, but first Chair, I believe that Vice Chair of the committee Supervisor Kinsman abstained at the committee level as he is one of the renters and I believe he would probably request to be excused at this point.
Thank you. If you run into Bob out in the hall, tell him you can come back. Please note for the record that Supervisor Kinsman has abstained himself from the debate and left the room. Okay Supervisor Krieger, you have the floor.
To make it a short story, what this amendment does is to amend the term of the lease to bring it into alignment with the calendar year rather than as it is now in renewing March first and running through February twenty-eighth. How did we get to March first? I believe years ago when we first started running that cropland, that was the date that we were ready to rent and so away we went. But at this point, since the master plan calls for us to maintain that land and to own it, this is a step towards making some fiscal sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Polivka, do you care to speak to your second?
No, thank you Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Pepper, you have the floor.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I think I got a question for Mr. Desmond. How is this with Supervisor Kinsman subleasing the pasture land out of conflict of interest with the county?
I believe he said it was a conflict, so he left.
So how can he still actually lease it? Because years ago Virgil Hardji couldn't sell post at cost to the highway department. I couldn't sell straw to the highway department at a lesser price.
I have the.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Car councils right here. Thank you very much.
This was looked at actually with Jake Curtis and I when I first started here and because the lease was originally entered into before Supervisor Kinsman was on the county board, it was deemed that he did not have a conflict in continuing on with that lease. Now that the leases are back up, that's an issue that will need to be addressed going forward, but he'd already entered the contractual arrangement prior to becoming a board member.
All right.
That's your simple answer.
Yep, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Excellent question, thank you. Supervisor Gruber?
Would that even be the same anyway? Because he's paying us, we're not paying him.
He's making a profit out of it.
So I'll let the lawyer answer that, Dr. Pepper.
No, it would still be, there's law out there about when you can or cannot enter, can or cannot enter contracts with the county and as it so happens, there actually is a webinar tomorrow put on by the Von Bresen and Roper Law Firm about conflicts of interest in county government and I will be in attendance. So your questions are about thirteen hours too soon.
No, I just knew that there was a certain dollar amount that they could sell to us underneath and pay a rent. I didn't know if that kind of offsets what he's making off.
There's other rules that go into that too.
Some of the supervisors, if you have your microphone straight up, can you tip them down? That helps with the feedback. Thank you. All right, any other supervisors care to speak to the resolution before us? Seeing none in the queue, you and nobody anxiously waving their hands, resolution seventy-four twenty-two authorizing amendments to Sauk County Farm and Cropland pasture agreements. You may vote on the resolution now. So we have twenty-eight supervisors in favor with Supervisor Kinsman abstaining and two supervisors absent an excuse. The resolution passes. Supervisor Kinsman, you can come back and play with the rest of us now. Onto ordinance ten, twenty-two from Land Resources and Environment. An ordinance amendment to chapter seven Sauk County Code of Ordinances found on pages sixteen through eighteen of your packets. Do we have a motion to adopt? Motion by Supervisor Kinsman, second by Supervisor Spencer. Supervisor Kinsman, do you care to speak to your motion?
Yes, so this, basically we had an individual come to us and they didn't kind of fit the wording of our current ordinance. So we're basically adding animal rescue to it, just the wording didn't really fit our current ordinance the way it was written. So that's basically what it is. They will still have to apply for a conditional use permit, but this is just to kind of allow for them to do that.
Thank you Supervisor Spencer, do you care to speak to your second?
No, thank you Mr. Chair.
Okay, I do not see any other supervisors in the queue at this time. So you have before you ordinance ten twenty-two, an amendment to chapter seven, court of ordinances. You may vote on the ordinance amendment now. Twenty-nine supervisors in favor with nobody in opposition and two supervisors absent an excuse. The resolution passes. That brings us up to C Personnel Insurance Committee, resolution seventy-five twenty-two to ratify the July first twenty twenty-one, December thirty-first twenty twenty-three collective bargaining agreement between Sauk County and the Wisconsin Professional Police Association, L two four one Sheriff's Department sworn unit, found on pages nineteen through twenty-eight in your packets. We have a motion by Supervisor Spencer, second by Supervisor Kinsman. Supervisor Spencer, do you care to speak to your motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is finally a agreement we finally got with the WPPA. They've been working without a contract for well over a year or more and it does come to an agreement to give a, I will use the terms substantial raise to those who are in need of it and to keep officers here in our county rather than have them go to other departments for more wages.
Supervisor Kinsman, do you care to speak to your second?
Thank you Chair.
Are there any other supervisors who care to speak to the resolution before us? Seeing none in the queue, you have resolution seventy-five twenty-two ratifying bargaining agreement between the Sauk County and the WPPA L two forty-one Sheriff's Department represented. You may vote on the resolution now. We have twenty-nine supervisors in favor with nobody in opposition and two supervisors absent and excused. The resolution is adopted. Brings us to item two under Personnel Insurance, resolution seventy-six twenty-two authorizing a contractual agreement with McGrath Human Resource Group to provide professional services to conduct the Sauk County classification and compensation analysis. That is on twenty-nine and thirty in your packets. We have a motion by Supervisor Gruber, second by Supervisor Spencer. Supervisor Gruber, do you care to speak to your motion?
This is a long time coming. They're going to look at all of the positions or most of the positions within the county and perform a new class and comp study. This was picked by our administrator and our personnel director and I can't remember who else he had with you. Oh, yeah, the lawyer guy. And the finance group. We took a look at this and this, the company that they have selected was the one that they felt met their needs and fit best with what we're looking to do here at the county. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Spencer, do you care to speak to your second?
I believe Supervisor Gruber covered most of it. No, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Pepper, you haven't missed one tonight. Go for it.
Yeah, I have, but is this similar to the Fox Lawson survey we did years ago?
Yes, but it's going to be more current and up to date. Those combat classes do run out.
Hopefully the outcome is much better.
That is the goal. Alrighty, anybody else care to speak to the resolution before us? You have before you resolution seventy-six twenty-two authorizing a contractual agreement with McGrath to provide classification and compensation study. You may vote on the resolution now. Or no. We have twenty-nine supervisors in favor with nobody in opposition, two supervisors absent an excuse. The resolution passes. Item eighteen, we do not have any referrals. Item nineteen, if you have any new agendas, submit them in writing or by email to the county administrator as soon as possible per rule three A referral. Item number twenty, motion by Shell, second by Supervisor Rego to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Thank you ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you Brian.
Thanks Brian.